Good evening and welcome to the August 17th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter right over there along with request to speak cards. As a reminder to everyone that request to speak card should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes and we will be holding firm to that tonight. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair, that's myself, and come forward to the microphone, which is right up here. If you need that adjusted, we can show you how to do that. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable and so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. This evening we will start with a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Leibig?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on item A, presentations by the public are matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them at this time. So if you are interested in commenting on something not on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll move to item B, correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission secretary, Mr. Telly.
Yes, thank you. I do have a few items to cover at this time. First and foremost, you should have a memo in front of you from the city attorney's office. I encourage you to review that and if you have questions about that, please contact myself offline. Secondly, you should also have a memo from Kathy Allen regarding the Mid-Cal Motorcycle Project, which is item six on our agenda tonight, so I encourage you to keep that handy when we receive, get to that item. And then I also wanted to report on two items from last night's city council meeting, which were directly related to prior discussions here at the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission may recall back on July 20th, you heard two cannabis-related items where you did vote to make recommendations to the city council on those two items. Both were heard last night by the city council and so just the first one I'll discuss was the item that was presented by our director, Hamilton, at our prior meeting at the Planning Commission. This was an ordinance that primarily cleaned up some of our personal cultivation language that really needed to be updated with some of the new laws that had been passed, also established testing laboratories as a conditional land use and made some other, you know, changes to our municipal code to really get current with the current law. As part of that, we've brought forth to the Planning Commission some recommendations that were specifically from the Planning Commission. The first was a age restriction on, within these certain businesses and the second was some additional findings primarily related to concentration of these land uses. After some discussion, you know, last night and we also in the intervening time also determined that the state business or professions codes already provided for an age restriction for cannabis-related uses and that restriction is actually was, is more restrictive than what we were proposing to do. So with that in place and we could not be more, we could not be less restrictive than the state law, so we did ask that the council remove that particular line item from that project. And then also there was discussion from the council about those additional findings. There was some, there was some thought that a potential clustering of these related businesses could possibly be a positive thing and so if ultimately the council did decide on this particular item to remove those additional findings. Similar, then ultimately they did vote to conduct first reading on that ordinance. Secondly, the next item on the agenda was the high-end medical project, which was also heard by the Planning Commission back on July 20th. This was a manufacturing use, was proposed on West Capitol Avenue. Similar to the previous item, they did remove the age restriction in favor of the, what's already on the books in state law and similarly the findings for related to the concentration that we worked out here at Planning Commission. So we revisit this topic tonight once we get to item eight, but I did want to report on what happened just, you know, just last night in the chambers. And so with that, that, oh, and lastly, and hopefully most importantly, our commissioner Thomas Vu last night was appointed as a full member of the Planning Commission, so although he had previously scheduled a, speak of the, Mr. Vu, who was last night appointed as a full member of the Planning Commission, so we want to congratulate him. He's been serving obviously essentially as a full member all year and so, but now he's officially a full member of the Planning Commission. So congratulations now, full Commissioner Vu, and with that, I will conclude my remarks at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Item C is disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning commissioners should disclose any communications they have had on agenda items at this time. I'll start to my right.
I had communications regarding item number seven, pretending to electrify fences with the applicant.
I similarly had a conversation with applicants for item seven and item eight.
I've had communications with community members and residents on item five as well as the applicant on number eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had similar communications with members of the community as well as applicants for, well, let me rephrase that, as well as interested parties in item number eight.
No communications.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll be moving to the consent agenda, there are items one, two, and three. If you are interested in speaking on any of these items, seeing none, I will entertain a motion from the commissioners.
Chair, shall we take these separately given there were some absences at the previous meeting?
I will entertain that as a motion, so do you want, do you want to pull them or take them separately?
I'd move approval of the items with a roll call vote for each.
Okay.
Yes, please, a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. So we will take them one at a time. Item number one, consideration and approval of the minutes from the July 20th commission meeting.
I'll move approval of the July 20th, 2017 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Leibig and a second from Commissioner Laporte. All those in favor, we're going to do a roll call vote for each of these, I believe.
Okay. Mr. Vu.
Aye.
Laporte.
Aye.
Leibig.
Aye.
Sternfels.
Aye.
Castillo.
Aye.
Ann Austin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Her motion carries. Item two is consideration and approval of the minutes from the August 3rd commission meeting.
I will move approval of the minutes for August 3rd, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Leibig and a second from Vice Chair Sternfels.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Laporte.
Aye.
Sternfels.
Aye.
Leibig.
Aye.
Ann Austin.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Oh, did, did we get Commissioner Vu or?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vu, thank you.
And without the motion carries, thank you very much. We are on to item three, ratification of zoning administrator interpretation regarding commercial indoor/outdoor dog parks and dog daycare. So are we just pulling, we don't need a staff presentation to confirm? Great, and so we can do a, can do a roll call vote on this one as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Leibig.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Repeat the subject or my commentary?
Yes, are we on number three?
We are on number three, the ratification of zoning administrator interpretation regarding commercial indoor/outdoor dog parks and dog daycare. And what I was saying is that I'm not going to request a staff presentation unless a commissioner requests it.
Okay. And there was a motion?
And, yes, so I was, oh, you're right, thank you. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
Vice Chair Sternfels, seconded by Commissioner Leibig. And then you want to roll, thank you.
Commissioner Leibig.
Aye.
Commissioner Laporte.
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Vu.
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So moving on to the regular agenda, the first item is number four, public hearing to consider approval of new mixed-use building located at 1558 Jefferson Boulevard.
We are requesting a continuance on this to your September 7th meeting.
Do we need a vote on that or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So all those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries to be continued to our next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. We are now moving on to item five and I will reiterate because we have several speakers on this, that if you are interested in speaking on this item, there are request to speak cards right over here. Your card needs to be submitted to the clerk to my right before the end of this, before the completion of any staff presentation. And I will let folks know what order they will be speaking in. So what we'll be doing for item five, which is a public hearing regarding the proposed conditional use permit for the Medina Islamic Center at 217 Fifth Street, we will hear staff presentation, we will hear questions from commissioners, we will then open the public hearing and allow public comment, we'll be calling people up one at a time, we will close a public hearing and we will be taking a vote if appropriate. Is that correct, City Attorney?
And, yes, and we would encourage use of the timer tonight to give everyone an opportunity to speak.
Yes, and to reiterate, people will be given three minutes and you will not be allowed to go over time to allow equal time for all people making comments this evening. So we will hear from Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chairperson Austin and members of the commission. This item is a conditional use application for a religious institution to be located at 217 Fifth Street in the Washington neighborhood. The project is proposed to be located in an existing 1,276 square foot building that was formerly used as a single-family residence. In 2016, a fire occurred at the neighboring residence which was located at 221 Fifth Street. The applicant's building was partially damaged due to that fire and when staff from the building division came to inspect the damage, they observed that changes had been made to the interior of the structure and thus informed the applicant that building permits would be required. When the applicant came to the building division to submit for the building permits, it was also discovered that a conditional use permit was required for the operation of their religious institution. And from a land use perspective, religious institutions are zoned as an assembly land use and they are considered no differently dependent upon which religion is being practiced. This particular project is located in the Washington specific plan area and the parcel and the surrounding parcels are all zoned high-density residential, which would allow for a residential density of 20.1 to 50 dwelling units per acre. In addition to residential uses, public and quasi-public uses are permitted or conditional uses in the zone and a religious institution is considered a quasi-public use. The Washington specific plan area also has a design review component, however, as no changes are proposed to the exterior of the building, design review has not been conducted on this project. Staff is recommending approval of the project as all findings can be made. The project has solicited comments to staff, both for and against the project. Currently, at the time I wrote this, this afternoon, we had received four projects in favor of the project, two against the project. The applicant is in the audience and would be available to answer any questions the commission might have. I'm also happy to answer your questions and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. So because the applicant is available for questions, does the applicant have a presentation that they would like to give?
I'm not sure if they have a specific presentation.
Then I'll just do this via public comment in that case. So I'll start with questions from my fellow commissioners and I'll start with Commissioner Vu.
No questions yet.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
I'll wait to the comments.
Same.
Great, and myself as well, so thank you. So at this time, we will be opening the public hearing. The first two speakers will be Linda Denton and Wayne Bossikat. If Linda is available.
Wayne is.
Well, actually, wait one moment, is Linda Denton available? Okay, so she'll be speaking first and then Wayne will be speaking second.
I would like to read something that I have from the internet regarding church zoning on subjects of special use permits or unconditional use permits. Traditionally, church zoning wasn't an issue. Places of worship were allowed as of right under municipal zoning codes in residential districts. When the US cities initiated zoning, many households walked to worship services and it was disruptive, and it wasn't disruptive at all to have a place of worship in residential district. A few zealous municipalities created zoning category called institutions, increasing the use permits required to obtain permission to build or expand a house of worship for several reasons. Now, most of the attendees arrive by automobile, so traffic is an issue. We are not religiously homogeneous as a people, so in a typical community, churches, synagogues, and mosques are holding services at many different times during the week, so the traffic situation is not isolated to a couple of hours per week. Also, the congregations are taking more and more roles. Many sponsor daycare centers, parent day-out programs, senior centers and activities, youth recreation, social services, and many other activities all times of the day and week. Almost everyone comes and goes by automobile. So it's no longer true that a place of worship can't disrupt a residential neighborhood. I feel that to deal with the traffic, we need accommodations. And, let's see. However, in practice, either allows public input and questioning as to actual scheduling and frequency of events and also handling of traffic and parking arrangements. Sometimes noise is not, is a church zoning issue. Once in my professional practice, a congregation wanted to obtain a church zoning designation in a residential neighborhood. The lining question veered over into the schedule that the pastor had allowed, a meeting which would last until 10:00 PM or so on weekends. That sent the idea of neighbors over the edge. Now, every morning involves risking life and limb to back out of their own driveways as cars round the corner, running late. Some courts have had, the congregations are virtually immune to the restrictions of municipal zoning and that churches are perfectly appropriate in residential districts and cannot be banned even if places of worship are detrimental to traffic and property values. In other words, the courts presume that places of worship should be accommodated. In looking at the analysis that was put out by Kathy Allen, a portion of it says, "The requested issue is essential or desirable to the public comfort and convenience." I don't see that this is a public comfort.
Denton, your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Wayne Bossikat and next after him will be Steve Peterson.
Hi. I live just north over in the rivers, so I walk by, drive by where this place is all the time, never had any problem with it, and I support them getting their permits because it's the right thing to do.
Thank you very much. Next is Steve Peterson, on deck is Charlotte Dorsey.
Good evening, Steve Peterson, 213 Washington Place. I live adjacent to the location and I just had some questions and some suggestions on conditions. The staff report doesn't really explain the project very, very thoroughly, so I think the concern is that it's surrounded on three sides by single-family, it was a former single-family use. What it really says, it's an assembly area with a parking space. So my questions have to do with the hours of operation, the demand for parking, there's no information on the number of attendees. It was mentioned there may be other kind of ancillary uses for the, for the property, what are those? I am aware that there are about six to 10 taxis that currently park in the neighborhood, so I'm assuming that's kind of a baseline perhaps for the kind of demand you're going to get for this site, but it's just very sketchy in terms of what the project is. And the site plan doesn't show any, any details on things like exterior lighting. Are there going to be an exterior speakers related to noise that could affect some of the neighboring residences? So in terms of conditions, we would like to have some reasonable hours of operation established, some clarification of what the uses are for the assembly, and a subsequent review of the site plan to try to dial in on the details associated with lighting, exterior speakers, or any other kinds of design features that might affect some of the neighboring properties. And then finally, if there's some good neighbor outreach that could occur, I'm also on the Metro Place Homeowners Association, we'd be happy to meet with them just to understand more about the project and, and how we could work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I, at the end of public comment, I will have staff address concerns as appropriate. Thank you so much. So next we have Charlotte Dorsey and then after her, Melinda Guerin.
Good evening, commissioners. I've been a resident of West Sacramento since 2014 and I live in the north part of town, about four or five blocks from the center. One of the things I love about West Sacramento is its diversity in so many ways. I am also a member of the California Senior Legislator, the Area 4 Agency on Aging, the Yellow Healthy Aging Alliance, and the Brighton-Barrick Community Action Network. I do not support, I do not represent them today, but I am pretty sure they would all support what I'm going to say. I believe this is a good addition to West Sacramento. We have passed the center that exists now many times, we live about four blocks from it. Probably six times a day, we drive past it, we've driven past it when their services are going. We've seen the crowds, which are not disruptive. We actually hear more noise from the coyotes on the river and from Brayley Field than we do from that particular center. So we fully support, I fully support the continuation of this permit and, and I would do anything we can to help this center communicate their, their goals and their wishes and to help them with neighborhood outreach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melinda Guerin and then next is Mohammed Afiz.
Good evening. I am confident that everybody here remembers that it's a part of our constitution, our First Amendment rights for freedom of assembly, for freedom of religion, not trying to bring any problems to our wonderful neighbors, but I've been on Carey Street since 98, 99 and for as long as I can remember, families have gathered at this particular location on Fifth Street for peaceful assembly on a regular basis. I've never seen disruption to the neighborhood. I've never seen large, the Slavic Church at the corner of Jefferson and Sacramento Avenue has more traffic every Sunday from about 8:00 AM to noon than I have ever seen at any other house of worship in West Sacramento. And if we can have 10 Christian theology-based churches between Harbor, Fifth Street, Sacramento Avenue, and the levee, we have room at the table for our fellow members of the human race that practice Islamic faith. There is plenty of room at the table for them. And as to concerns about traffic for that kind of street or people getting in and out of their neighborhood, the street is a high-traffic street to start with. It is a two, four-lane street. It's always been high-traffic, so it's, and there's very few driveways right in that particular area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mohammed Afiz and then Parveen Tomber.
Hi, I am Mohammed Afiz. I am the applicant. And can Mr. Saad speak behalf of me?
Are you asking for someone to speak on behalf of you?
Yeah.
Yes, you can turn over your time and the person can introduce himself.
Good evening. My name is Saad Suelam. I'm a civil rights attorney with CARE Sacramento Valley. So I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Afiz. The community's been here for 16 years now. There've been no issues, there've been no problems. They've, they've been, you know, good members of the, of the community here in West Sacramento. About 20 families attend this mosque and they've been doing so, as I said, for 16 years without any of these issues raised. You know, there were some flyers passed around the last few days, which is why a lot of people became concerned. So we just, you know, it's important to remember that houses of worship are protected by, from discrimination by zoning laws. And a lot of times Islamophobia isn't blatant, it's disguised under false pretenses such as concerns about traffic and concerns, you know, about, I heard something about lighting. And, you know, the, it's important to remember that this, this, this community's been here. They've been here for over 16 years, they've made positive contributions to the community and I hope, you know, we take that into consideration and really consider some of the concerns and whether they've been concerns beforehand and when they've been here for the last 16 years, how often have we heard these concerns before? Is there anything else you'd like, is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, so please, you know, just remember that, like I said, they've been here, they're, they're excited to be part of this community and they've been part of this community and they're excited to continue to be a part of this community and we look forward to making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Parveen and then Rosemary Robinson will be next.
Good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners, staff, and members of the public. It's nice to be back here in a different capacity. I'm here in my capacity as the co-president of the American Sec Public Affairs Association and also as a resident of the fine city of West Sacramento. My late grandfather was, was one of the co-founders of the Sikh Temple on Evergreen and that was, I think it was 1987, just based on my memory as a, as a kindergartner. The community has benefited greatly from the temple and from, from the Sikh community's presence here. It's now, I'm sure you all know, it's now the location of a charter school. I'm sure you all have seen the opposition flyer, it doesn't have any grounds for an opposition, but just notifying public that this needs to be opposed. I, I certainly don't know and I'd hate to think that the grounds, that the, the drafters of that flyer did so for any sort of hateful purpose. I'm happy to see so many community members here to support the project. The Sikh, the Sikh community has grown in West Sacramento and our temple has grown and we're really happy to see and support the Muslim community growing. and we're really happy to see and support the Muslim community growing as well. I remember voting on, well, we've got other, we've got other religious centers in residential areas such as the two churches in the state streets that were housing a charter, were housing charter schools until, I think, just recently. So we understand the traffic concerns and obviously the greater public benefit from having these types of centers here. So I just wanted to state our, the Sikh community's support of this, of this project as well as of the Muslim community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rosemary Robinson, and then next will be Bill Rohr. Is Rosemary Robinson, okay, just checking. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Board, for letting me speak. First of all, nothing is construed as being biased or in support, conservative, liberal. It's just in general that I do own some property on the street. We have not known that it's been an Islamic center or whatever they're calling it. I'm not sure what they're calling it, if it's a mosque or what have you. My concern is, is it butts up right next to residuals already, and if I wanted to put, you know, anything else in there, even if it was protected under that, doesn't matter if it's Catholic, Mormon, you know, Mormon tabernacle, or what have you, it has nothing to do with it being Islamic. The point for me is just everything being improved on the south side of Washington. Rayleigh Field, we have the new firehouse going in. Anything that's being approved or going north of Ice Street Bridge, I don't see any attention to that, and the flyer did catch my attention, but it's true that I have a lot of vagrancy on my property. I'm always continuing going in there. I have to post a sign and everything for it. So I would just love the Board to consider the improvements for that direction, and if truly, in fact, it does. They all seem like peaceful individuals. Catholics are peaceful individuals. That has nothing to do with it. Again, it has everything to do with the structure being in place, butting up against residuals already. If you look at the residents now, the aesthetics from the exterior, you would almost want to say, okay, you need a board review for what it looks like, because it does look a little rundown. However, again, the beautiment of that side of Washington District, which I know you're putting the trolley in, you're putting everything in, this is beautiful over here. I think you have so much potential with your boat ramp over there. You have that beautiful river district on the levees, and that's the gateway into there, and there's been no improvements. We're finally seeing some condos, some three-rise condos that are going in there. They're beautiful. I attended, I attended those board meetings, and two thumbs up for those. I've seen some other mosques, and I've seen their designs. It's not really in flow with it. That's not against them, but I wouldn't want a huge, big tabernacle with a big peak in there either. So again, I want to stress, this isn't racism, this isn't against them, it's against just the area, the location that it's in. Any other location, if it's larger, it's not even a large space that they're in as well. So if you can consider that, consider the aesthetics, if it is visually going to do improvements to this area, which at one time, almost bordering it, was a reserved spot for the governor's mansion, which I think the time has elapsed on that. So this is a really, really special strip that we're talking about, that they're requesting. So if you can just take a little more time to look at it, maybe go view it, and then consider it from them, but just not be so quick to judge and to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We have Bill Rohr, and the last speaker I have here is Said Sway Lim.
My name is Bill Rohr. Thank you very much for giving me the chance to address you this evening. I wouldn't be here tonight if it were not for the now notorious flyer, which I found stuck in my windshield wiper yesterday afternoon. I live on Watercolor Lane. This is in the ungated part of the rivers, just a few blocks from the Islamic Center. I'm here to urge the Commission to accept the recommendation of its staff and approve this conditional use permit. I've lived in my house since 2005. I regularly travel to and from. My daily trips invariably take me by the Islamic Center. I've never noticed any untoward activity. It's a peaceful place. On certain holidays, there is a lot of parking. I noticed that the applicant has made some provision, or there is some condition for some onsite parking. I think that's a good thing. It's been 12 years and no problems. I've never seen any police activity. This seems like a very peaceful place to worship. I know that the flyer refers to the fact that it borders residential areas, but many churches in West Sacramento, many places of worship do border residential areas, and this one is not unusual in that regard. It also refers to this being the third Islamic Center within an approximate one, one and a half to two miles. I don't know of any density rule for places of worship in the city. I want to, and I also want to echo Charlotte's comments. I appreciate the diversity of West Sacramento. That's one of the things that draws me to this community. It's divergent, diverse in age, ethnicity, race, and certainly in the way we worship and celebrate a higher power. So I urge the Commission to follow the recommendation of the staff and approve this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Said. Said, is this, you've already had a chance to speak?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So this is a last speaker. If anyone would like to speak, they may approach the microphone now, and at the conclusion of your remarks, you would need to turn in a speaker comment card.
Can I do that? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
One moment, if you, yeah, because we're televised.
Good evening, guys, and I'm Mohammed Tarik. I own the property right across street almost, which is the Lighthouse Market in Delhi, and then I own the few residencies in the area too. And I've been attending the Masjid Al Noor for last, ever since it was built, in the last 16 years. And I tended, and my father, who passed away a few years ago, he tended as well as I did. And I'm looking forward to attending it, and it's great, you know, a place for us, you know, to, so convenient, you know, to just walk, and we are just about, almost 20 families in using it. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. So make sure you fill in a comment card and hand it to the clerk, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Dodson. I am a West Sacramento homeowner. I live about three blocks from the site that we're discussing this evening, and I would also like to encourage you guys to accept the staff recommendations. I've seen nothing but positivity coming from the center, great people that I've talked to on the streets, walking by. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to provide comment?
Good evening. My name is Golda Ut Khan. They call me David Khan. I'm a last 50 years resident in West Sac, and I'm the supporter of the West Sacramento City. I also owned four pipe houses in West Sac, and I don't see, used to be owning the 204th Street, which was on the blacklist. I had so much trouble with that than any other churches or anything like that. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. And please fill out a comment card, sir? Sir? Looks like they're letting him know he needs to complete a comment card and turn it in to the clerk, please. Would anybody else like to provide comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll be closing the public hearing at this time. And with that, I would like to turn it over to staff to provide some initial responses, and then I'll turn it over to some of my Commissioners as well. If there are any, you know, kind of topical things that came up during the public comment period that you'd like to address.
In terms of the lighting for the project that one of the respondents mentioned, that is something that will be addressed when we do the building permit plan check, and it will be ensured by the Building Department that the lighting standards are met.
And is that standard City practice?
Yeah, the city's zoning ordinance does have performance standards for exterior lighting, and we review that on all projects.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over to my fellow Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Vu.
Yeah, one question, and more for staff. On any other places of worship throughout the city, have there been any special conditions or something placed on them, any particular requirements?
Yeah, over the years, there have been. The one I can think of most recently is the Southport Community Church that has, operates under a use permit out in Southport Business Park. There are some requirements applied on that one, not many. It's mostly, most, many of those were just addressing how they were really converting what was really an industrial building that made it suitable for religious use, certainly was not what those buildings were designed for initially. We haven't seen too many come through the Planning Commission recent years. That's the one I remember most recently, that it is a use permit, and, you know, you retain, you know, discretion, as you do with most use permits, but we would want to make sure that, you know, any condition, you know, is supported by our findings and general plan policies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leibig.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that the applicant has been using this space for several years, and to my knowledge, they've been a good neighbor. I also live in this neighborhood. On that note, I had some questions for staff. I understand that there are some, you know, we're in a weird permit situation as they're in existing use. Are they proposing an increase in use under this permit?
No, they're not.
No, they're not. Thank you. And their hours of operations, I'm somewhat familiar with it because I'm probably one of those cars that are, maybe, maybe sometimes driving a little too fast, although I try not to down that street, but it is, it is a very large street, and it's a, it's a main thoroughfare for a large neighborhood, so. But hours of operation, can you, can you briefly describe?
I would actually need to defer that question to the applicant.
Okay, well, maybe I can, actually, just, just from my own observation, so we don't have to reopen the public hearing. That's not, that was my intent. Often, early, early morning prayer, late evening prayer, and sometimes gatherings. Not unusual for any church, actually. So as a resident, I don't see any timing that's unusual compared to other churches in our neighborhood, and I don't really care to call that out as a special condition because of that. And I'm trying to address some of the comments and questions. I do understand that there is a parking situation in this neighborhood. We're going to continue to see parking issues in this neighborhood as we're densifying the Washington neighborhood. We're building higher-density housing around Rayleigh Field, and there's going to be some growing pains. The Commission has acknowledged this several times, and partly what we're trying to avoid are parking lots, because parking lots and wide streets don't really help with higher-density building, which then fosters walkability. And this, this location fits within that higher, higher-density urban development, and although parking can be an issue at times, they appear to be, in my opinion, finding workarounds. And yes, yes, there's parking on the street at times, and yes, I've had to, you know, you have to be careful when people are parking at a church. There's slow ingress, egress, but that's what happens as people within the community are attending church or going to any function for that matter, so. It is a community gathering location, almost by definition, so I'm in favor of this. I support the church or the location, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Laporte.
I don't have any questions, but more of just general comment. I think, you know, in light of what's happening in America or really all over the world right now, it's kind of encouraging and hopeful to see the community that has come out in support of this, and I support it as well, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo.
Just a couple of questions. Thanks for, for both sides at least coming in to inform us and sharing your comments. As it relates to the parking, I'll be quick for staff, I guess, is it eight additional parking spots that are going to be part of this new structure? In the back of it, is it eight, or is there an ability to put more back there? I heard a comment, as part of the comments, they said eight. I wasn't sure.
It's actually going to be 11 spaces.
Okay. And have we received any complaints in the past as it relates to traffic at this location? I mean, they've been around for about 16 years, operating in this neighborhood. Have there ever been any complaints as it relates to traffic or noise or parking?
Staff is not aware of any complaints on any of those issues.
Thanks. And then, you know, just, I guess, general comments, this is about, and this is in our report too, just want to reiterate this, this is about allowing individuals to freely express their faith in a safe space. It will also improve the characteristics of the property. That's benefiting surrounding neighbors, neighbors by paving the alley and making improvements to that alley, as well as adding some parking to help alleviate some concerns as it relates to parking. And so, you know, it's definitely something that's going to help that particular neighborhood. And, you know, I was, I'm not sure about my other fellow Commissioners, but I read every comment on social media regarding this particular, this particular project, and, you know, I got to say that there was a lot of opposition to this project, but it was not necessarily simply on the zoning issue, and I, and I fear that a lot of it was driven by fear in terms of what was written on social media, and maybe not necessarily represented today, but the posts on social media say otherwise in terms of why people oppose this. And when you post charts on there that talk about the number of terrorist attacks paradiology, then that's not necessarily a concern about traffic or a concern about noise or a concern about parking. That's more a concern about fear. And so I just, you know, that kind of brings me a little pause a little bit in terms of what the opposition is bringing forward to us, and I, and I hear you completely in terms of the parking space as an issue, but there's plenty of parking in that area as well, and I think that has been addressed, and the fact that there will be improvements to this site is something that's refreshing. And so I'm going to be supporting the conditional use permit of this project. I think, as Commissioner Laporte stated, it's a time in our nation where these types of conversations are happening as it relates to the, the different religious beliefs that we practice, and someone in the audience made a comment about our, you know, right to be able to, freedom of religion, and I think that's, in Sacramento, in West Sacramento, we're a diverse community. I heard that several times throughout the night, we're a diverse community, and we embrace that diversity, whether it's sexual orientation, whether it's your religious belief, whether it's your race, age, and I think that's something that we're proud of here in West Sac, so I'd be happy to support this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Faust.
Thank you, Chair Austin. I won't take too much time because I don't want to spend, I don't want to repeat what's been said by my fellow Commissioners. I am absolutely going to support the conditional use permit tonight. I do want to thank those who came out and spoke in a respectful way about the project. I have to tell you that I think myself and several other members of my commission, our commission, we're probably holding our breath for a few minutes, and that's really unfortunate, candidly, that we live in a time where there's, there seems to be so much anger and hate and disrespect of people as people, because we're all different in many different ways. So I'm grateful for the respectful conversation tonight. I also want to be clearly reiterate Commissioner Castillo's comments about the things that were happening online, both in social media and through some other platforms, and the negative way and the negative things that were said about this. I'm really, really glad to see so many people came out to support this project tonight in a positive way, but the negativity and the disrespectful, and I would say sometimes hateful, things that were posted online were I'm really, really glad to see so many people came out to support this project tonight in a positive way. But the negativity and the disrespectful, and I would say sometimes hateful, things that were posted online were completely inappropriate. They do not reflect this community, this community's leadership, and the members of this community in total. And I just, I think that's important for everyone to remember, that we are, we are one human race, and we can, we can all live here very happily together. And in West Sacramento, I think 99.9% of the time, we do. And when we don't, we figure out a way to do it. So I want to thank everyone, again, for coming out tonight, for the positive comments that were made, and again, just severely denounce the negativity around this item, because as we were sitting here, this was on the news as a controversy. And that's incredibly unfortunate, that when people think of West Sacramento, that's what they're thinking about, because that's not what I want them to think about. I know that's what pretty much everyone in this audience feels the same way. So I thank all of you for coming out tonight, and look forward to moving the, moving the project forward at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. I echo the land use questions and concerns of my fellow commissioners, and also the call to unity that's been voiced so far. I also want to thank the commenters who came out and had concerns about this project. I think that you did so in a very respectful way, and really honored the process of making comments in ways that were not incendiary. I also want to acknowledge that public comment is not actually a vote. This is not about majority versus minority, how many people came out. What this really is about is that our commission is tasked with deciding what is in the best interest of our community, and we will see by the vote and we hear from the comments that we believe that what is in the best interest of our community is supporting each other regardless of our, you know, race, faith, ethnicity, or other identifying factors. I also want to take a moment, not just to denounce the activity that's been going on in social media that have been hateful and frankly racist. I'm also very concerned about some of the actions that have been taken in our neighborhoods and against civil servants around this, this item. Again, it's not acceptable to go after our neighbors, and it's not acceptable to go after our civil servants. It's entirely inappropriate, and I don't imagine that people in this audience may have been engaged in that. I'm more concerned about people who may be streaming this online or watching it at home. So I can say that we uniformly denounce that behavior. Item number six is a public hearing regarding the proposed conditional use permit for retail And so with that, I will entertain a motion for this item.
I move to approve the requested conditional use permit, as recommended by staff.
motorcycles and service at 1551 Merkley Avenue. Ms. Allen.
Hello again.
Second, I have a motion from Commissioner Vu and a second from Commissioner Laporte.
This project is a conditional use permit application for a motorcycle shop which proposes
All those in favor say aye.
to offer retail sales and service.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay.
It's located at 1551 Merkley Avenue, which is the location of the former Hollywood Hardware
Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's
Store. The project is on .62 of an acre and includes a 6,700 square foot building.
action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. Madam Chair, since many persons in the audience may be here for this item, perhaps we could
The site has paved parking, which includes 18 parking spaces.
allow a moment before we start our next item, if anyone wishes to depart at this time.
This project is also subject to the West Capitol Avenue Design Guideline. The applicant has initiated that process, and the, excuse me, the application is currently out for public review. We anticipate the design review will conclude around approximately August 28. The site does have several sensitive land uses in close proximity to it. Because of that, staff did require a noise analysis for the project. The locations that are located in close proximity to it are the Collins Teen Center, which is actually located directly adjacent to the site, Margaret McDowell Manor, the YOLO Education Center, River City Dance Academy, and Heritage Peak Charter School. Allard Acoustical did a noise study back in June and concluded that this project was completely within West Sac noise standards and that no mitigation for noise would be required. Staff is recommending approval of this project. I did give you a memo today with one additional condition regarding all work being done inside the building. That was at the request of the City Attorney's Office. So we would ask, should you choose to approve this project, that you add that condition as well, and we did discuss that condition with the applicant today. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions for you. The applicant is here in the audience as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll start to my right. Commissioner Laporte, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
No.
Commissioner Castillo.
Appreciate the information and the fact that there was a noise. That was one of my questions, concerns when I first read this report, but then I read the noise study, and it took care of that. In terms of parking, that was another question that I had. In terms of, I saw something on condition number nine, the engineering condition. I'm just curious, in terms of code enforcement violations, is that something that we should be concerned about moving forward, in terms of what some of those may be, as it relates to this particular project?
The applicant is working actively with code enforcement on, on addressing those. The violations had to do with some work that was done on the interior of the building prior to completing the use permit process.
And this is not the current building, but the one that they're in now?
Yes.
Got it. I just wanted some clarification on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Fels.
Mr. Liebig.
Commissioner Vu. Excellent. I don't have any questions or comments either, so I will entertain a motion.
Nope.
Could we open the public hearing, please?
Oh, okay, we can definitely open a public hearing. The public hearing is opened. I have no request to speak. If you would like to speak on this matter, please step forward to the podium.
I actually have a question for the applicant, if you wouldn't mind entertaining that.
Excellent, yes. So if the applicant could please come forward and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lori Driscoll, and I'm my husband and son. We're a family-owned and operated motorcycle business. My husband's been working in West Sac for about 10 years. We moved to a, we're trying to move to a better location, storefront, windows, people see us, kind of thing. We work on West Sac police motorbikes and three other, two other police motorbikes, and whoever else wants to stop by. And we'd like to continue being part of your community, and we're doing this for our son and his family. And that's all we're trying to do, is work. We're just hard-working people trying to work.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. I have a question. So the, we have an additional condition that is before us tonight on the project, and I want to make sure that you are aware of it and that you're okay with it. And the additional condition is that all motorcycle repairs shall be confined to the interior of the service area. I'm seeing, I'm seeing nodding heads behind you in the yes, yes, but I wanted to make sure that you were in fact okay with that.
That we're working on them inside?
That, in fact, the motorcycle repairs are being done inside the building, in the service area, and not outside.
And that's the way it'll be, if you can see overhead of the building, the addition that was added on by the original owner is the only repair area.
Okay.
The entire front half, it would be where the ADA bathrooms and all that stuff is, and a couple of small offices, and that'll all be up in the front. And with the noise concern, although we did pass the noise survey and everything was fine, there's going to be extensive additional soundproofing done to the interior of the building.
Once we add the walls.
Once the walls are put up, all the walls, so that, with the work being done in the back, and clothing and that type of stuff in the front, there'll be a sound wall in the middle, a sound fire wall.
Okay. It does. The, I think, I believe the noise was the reason for this condition, most likely, and so this would restrict the repairs to being indoors.
Correct.
Okay. And I want to make sure you were okay with that, before we added it to your actual permit, should we pass it?
If anything is done outside, it would be to rinse a motorcycle off and wipe it down, and that's no actual work, work.
Okay.
Right.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
Very good.
I do have one question. Is the Hollywood, Hollywood hardware sign still there? Last time I checked, I thought it was, but.
I remember seeing it recently.
Barely, it's quite faded. It's painted on the front.
Oh, that's what it was, right.
Oh, it's painted. I know where you're going with that.
Okay.
It's not neon. Okay, thanks. Well, before I entertain a motion, this is a total non sequitur, but I do want to share my enthusiasm that you'll be working on police bikes, because my dad, for many years, rode a decommissioned police Harley bike, and so I'm kind of a fan of your business. And thank you very much for being, for being business owners in West Sacramento. This particular, oh, yeah, this particular site has really been an eyesore in the heart of a very community-oriented, yeah, a very community-oriented area, where you have like a dance school, and a senior center, and a teen center, and the post office, so I'm very enthusiastic about it. And so with that, I will close the public hearing. I'll entertain discussion and motions.
I just have a couple of comments, and if there are no others, then I will, I will put forward the motion. It's a unique building, and it's not a regular auto repair, which we seem to be flush with. So I'm quite, quite comfortable moving forward. This is an existing business in the town, and they've proven to be a good neighbor. So unless there are any other comments, I will move staff's recommended action, along with the additional condition that all motorcycle repairs shall be confined to the interior of the service area.
I have a motion from Commissioner Liebig.
Yep. Second.
Second from Commissioner Laporte. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you very much. Item seven, we have a public hearing regarding Resolution 17-10 PC regarding amendments to Title 15 Buildings and Construction and Title 17 Zoning of the Municipal Code pertaining to electrified fences. Ms. Allen, yet again.
You just can't get rid of me tonight. This project involves changes to Titles 15 and 17 of the Municipal Code regarding the electric fencing regulations. The applicant, which is Electric Guard Dog, has requested a zoning ordinance change to Title 17, specifically Section 17.31.030B, to add electric fencing as a permitted use in the limited industrial zone. And for efficiency purposes, staff is also requesting to make changes to Section 15.11 at the same time. And the changes to Section 15.11 are not part of the applicant's request. We wanted to make that clear. This is something that staff is just doing to try to incorporate two things together. So in 2013, as part of the annual update to the zoning ordinance, Section 17.31 was added to address prohibited fencing materials. And this section covers both barbed wire and razor wire, along with electric fencing. And Section 17.31.030B currently prohibits electric fencing in all zones, with the exception of light industrial, heavy industrial, waterfront industrial, as well as the general agriculture zone, rural residential, and real estate zones, when it's being used for animal control. And it's also a conditional use in the business park zone. The Parks and Recreation Department, for the last few years, has been using goats as a green method of weed control. And in 2017, the park staff actually requested that staff from the fire department make a code determination regarding the use of portable electrified fencing that keeps the goats where the goats need to be. And the fire department staff is the one who actually requested that these changes be incorporated with the changes that our applicant had made. Staff has indeed just started its zoning modernization project. And as I know you're all aware, the zoning modernization project is the city's first wholesale change to the zoning ordinance since we incorporated. It follows on the heels of the general plan update. Staff has chosen to request this zoning ordinance change versus waiting through the whole zoning modernization process, because it is a very minor change, and we don't think it will hamper in any way what we're doing with the zoning modernization project. In terms of staff's analysis, in terms of the adding electrified fencing to the limited industrial zone, staff's analysis showed that the ML zone shares many characteristics with the three other industrial zones where it's allowed, and so we don't believe it is inconsistent with the other industrial zones where it is allowed. There are a very limited number of limited industrial parcels throughout the city compared with the other M zones. Staff from fire and building did review the applicant's proposal. They did, however, staff from fire did, however, request that there be a 500-foot buffer between any parcels in the ML zone with electrified fencing and residential parcels. Planning staff further would recommend, in addition to that, that a similar 500-foot buffer be shown between properties zoned commercial, mixed-use commercial, mixed-use neighborhood commercial, or waterfront. And the buffer, as we proposed, it would not apply to properties that are separated by either a freeway or a railroad corridor. Staff is requesting that the commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution, the Planning Commission Resolution, and recommend that the City Council adopt Ordinance 17-14, amending Municipal Code Section 15.11 regarding temporary electric fencing for grazing animals, and Municipal Code Section 17.31.010 regarding prohibited fencing materials. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, and I believe also has a presentation for you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So my only request to speak at this point is from the applicant. I'll actually, I'll actually open the public hearing, if you want to introduce yourself.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening, and thank you for your consideration tonight. My name is John Lee. I'm the Director of Compliance for the Electric Guard Dog, who is the applicant for the item this evening. We, we are a company that maintains, installs, and owns electrified security fences for our corporate clients. We are a national company with 4,000, over 4,000 installations nationwide. Our product is the most effective theft crime deterrent.
And the buffer, as we proposed, it would not apply to properties that are separated by either a freeway or railroad corridor. Staff is requesting that the commission adopt Planning Commission resolution, the Planning Commission resolution, and recommend that the City Council adopt Ordinance 17-14, amending Municipal Code Section 15.11 regarding temporary electric fencing for grazing animals and Municipal Code Section 17.31.010 regarding prohibited fencing materials. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, and I believe also has a presentation for you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My only request to speak at this point is from the applicant. I'll actually open the public hearing, if you want to introduce yourself.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening, and thank you for your consideration tonight. My name is John Lee. I'm the Director of Compliance for the Electric Guard Dog, who is the applicant for the item this evening. We are a company that maintains, installs, and owns electrified security fences for our corporate clients. We are a national company with 4,000, over 4,000 installations nationwide. Our product is the most effective theft crime deterrent, public safety device that is offered to companies that are in dire need of protecting their property. Recently, we've had several inquiries from businesses located in your city that wish to have our installations, and thus far, we have four in the aforementioned zones that Kathy had mentioned. However, there are other customers coming down that are also interested, which is what led us to our effort to have an individual text amendment tonight to expand it to limited industrial. And to that, I would like to say, first of all, thank you for the staff to bring this forward so quickly, and thank you also for your support. And having said that, and not wishing to be, like, unreasonable, I would like to direct the commission to the issue of the requirement of the 500-feet radius and, you know, a discussion about really the viability and the necessity for such a requirement. And I don't make that statement in haste because I know that public safety is of paramount importance to the company that I work for, and I'm certainly sure that it's of paramount importance to the city. Having said that, it's our contention that we believe that there are three ways that we address the issue, which is safety and security, risk of harm to innocent passerby's, people that might inadvertently touch this fence. And so we feel, in our position, is that we've addressed it in three ways. The first way, number one, is that routinely, our perimeter fence stands behind a customer's existing chain-link fence or wall. Number two, the customer's own wall, when we put in an installation, we are required by under code, and we agreed to do that back when this code was amended in 2013, to have plastic slats inserted into the chain-link fence, which pose a good buffer to prevent anyone trying to slip their hand through, either intentionally or inadvertently, to make contact with our fence. The third thing, and probably more importantly, is that when we install electrified security fence, it is operable only after business hours, and it's never operated during daylight. It's usually late at night, which is, you know, the high, the area, the day where you're at the highest risk of theft or burglary. And so with that said, we had four installations that have been put in thus far, and there's been no reports of any risk of injury thus far. And that coupled with the safeguards that I've outlined, we really feel that we've addressed that particular issue. And I'd ask this commission to, again, support the recommendation, move this forward with the exception of maybe rethinking about that necessity for the 500-foot radius.
Can I just confirm one thing? Are you saying 500 or 50?
I'm sorry. I'm going from the report, it says 500 feet. If I said 50 feet, then I misspoke. It's 500 feet.
500.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
No, I've concluded my remarks, and I thank you for your consideration tonight. I'm here to answer any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
You can have a seat. I'll keep the public hearing open because I think that there may be some questions from commissioners for staff to clarify some of the things that you've raised. So I, well, the public hearing is still open. Is anyone else interested in providing public comment? Seeing none, I will start with Commissioner Vu, if you have questions for the staff or the applicant.
Yes. Sorry about that. The applicant mentioned that there are, that he has worked with four installations in the city so far. Is there a 500-foot barrier or a buffer for those four installations?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And I guess the follow-up question is, how did staff arrive at that 500-foot number?
I'd like to invite our Fire Marshal, Brian Johnson, to help address that question, please.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Brian Johnson of the Fire Department. I'd like to add that the recommendation for the amendments were shared in concurrence with the building code official as well. Being the Fire Marshal can be challenging at times. Fortunately, I got a set of codes and standards that are fairly black and white that I'd like to think apply reasonably as appropriate. So with that, the decision for the 500-foot buffer is subjective in nature. With that, the considerations for it was an additional level of safety. I believe that the systems are installed within a reasonable amount of safety considered for a reasonable person, but also it's an attractive nuisance. I use my training and experience to apply the code, and I've experienced, as a young, curious, fiery young man, I've had my share of climbing fences and being electrocuted or shocked by them as well. And I would just hate to see anybody from the community, especially children, is our main concern, being so close to residents, if we could just add that additional barrier just to prevent that from happening. Similar to liquor stores have a buffer, we wanted to follow what would be similar in existing ordinances to date. Also, another example would be hazardous materials. You know, not only is it in zoning code, but in fire code amendments as well, specific zoning locations where they can exist. And also, additional consideration is made, depending, to add that additional buffer from residential areas. So with that all in play, came to our recommendation of the 500-foot barrier.
A follow-up question on that. But you can go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll go, I think, okay, yeah.
No, it's just on the 500 feet. But I don't know if Commissioner Lee Beg also has questions on the 500 feet.
No.
Okay. So with the Fire Marshal, here, I'll entertain additional questions, if you want to start.
Sorry, just a quick question. I was reading on the staff report, though, that the electrified fence would have another safety fence around it, a barrier around it, that's about six to eight feet high before a kid can actually touch it or someone walking around can touch it unless they climb that fence. So I'm wondering how, I guess, the 500 feet, my question is, isn't that an additional safety mechanism that was added that should ease some concerns as it relates to just having anyone go up to it and touch it?
As far as the primary fence?
Yeah. The primary fence, I guess, is six to eight feet?
Eight feet. It's the minimum.
Eight feet. So in order for someone to actually touch it and get electrified, I don't even know if that would actually happen, but they have to climb an eight-foot fence to be able to touch the other electrified fence that's going to be right behind it, parallel to it, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
They could grow up and become a fire marshal, so it's going to happen.
So my, I guess my, I guess, I mean, if, the whole purpose of it being there is for no one to actually touch it, right? So if you get it, if you touch it once, guaranteed you probably won't touch it again. I mean, it's a safety, it's a security fence, and that's what it's used for. So I guess, I don't know, for me, I think the fence that borders it addresses the, in addition to the other safety mechanisms, addresses that, but that's my opinion in general.
Well, and I have a logistical question. So, you know, some of the areas that have been used for, you know, the goats grazing, for weed control, they've been very close to residential areas. So is your, have you taken that into account, and what would, is your idea that we would use an alternative form? I know that may not be a question for you, may be a question for city staff.
Yeah, Chair Austin, I think we're talking about two different things here at the same time. What the buffer is referring to is actually the fences that would be installed on industrial properties.
Okay.
The goat fencing thing is separate from that. That would not, that wouldn't be practical because they're adjacent to residential areas everywhere. So this would be at the ML zone properties, including the one where I know the applicant, you know, is desiring to install one here pending this amendment. So the 500-foot buffer only applies there, does not apply to the goat fencing.
That clarification really helps me. Thank you. I was totally confused.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Fire Marshal Johnson.
Mr. Fire Marshal Johnson.
Can you please actually clarify that one?
I can't.
Because I just read that the complete opposite way.
Well, you know what, and I apologize that I didn't provide that appropriate clarity earlier when we spoke. If you look at Section 15.11.120, you'll notice amendment, that would be letter D, locations for portable livestock fencing shall only be approved in areas not adjacent to residential areas. It doesn't specifically state how far it would be, it would be a decision made by the Fire Marshal and the building code official prior to approval.
You got there, oh, you got there, I found it.
15.11.120.
Right. And I read that as meaning the 500 feet. So there is no specificity of 500 feet or distance, but it does say not adjacent to residential areas. Is that your safety recommendation still?
That's correct.
So if we did want to allow for goats near residences, assuming, okay, now, again, we're talking two different things.
Right.
You have the eight-foot fence in the industrial area, and then you have a 36-inch fence. I say fence because sometimes they're ribbons on a stick. Close to residential area, so.
Which also, so there is no specific regulation or standard that we're aware of to follow for the portable animal fence. So we took part of what's part of the International Electrical Technical Commission standard that we use for the commercial properties, and amended that in a reasonable way to address that. And it does include a primary fence similar to what's required in a commercial setting.
Right. So the outside fence has to be 40 inches and has to be 36 inches away from the electrified fence?
Correct. Understanding that a short fence is easy to reach, and if we provided a 36-inch barrier, we believe it's reasonable protection from anybody getting shocked.
Forty, okay. Forty inches should, you know, keep away toddlers at a minimum, maybe some of the commissioners. Okay, sorry, I didn't have any more questions.
So are there questions for the Fire Marshal? All right, you can take a seat.
Chair Austin, if I may, before Fire Marshal Johnson leaves. I believe there is a difference in voltage between the agricultural electric fence and the industrial fence.
They are different in nature.
Thank you.
Yeah, considerably different. So hence the reason for not necessarily requiring 500 feet from residential. The safety issue is not of as great a degree.
Thank you for that. Do you, yes?
So, two questions. One, and I know you spoke a little bit to this, but I'm not sure I got, I followed it. Any comments on how we landed on 500 feet as the distance? And second, well, actually, we'll start there.
So where we came about the 500 feet?
Yeah, versus 400 or 250.
It was to be consistent with other requirements for separation, is what we went with. In consideration, 500 feet at liquor store.
There are other land uses that, that's a common buffer, you know, certain adult uses from schools and parks, things like that. It is commonly applied. You know, there's certainly nothing magical, about 500 feet versus 499 or 501, but it seemed to be a reasonably enough buffer, but also not large enough where it would indirectly exclude many properties that may otherwise desire to have electric fences. It's partially why we also, going through this, added the caveat about the freeway separation and rail corridors, because as a crow flies, there are some properties that would be within 500 feet of industrial land, but they're already separated by an eight, you know, eight-lane freeway. It seemed to be, that would seem to be a sufficient buffer.
So are we familiar with any other jurisdictions that have adopted this similar buffer for electric fences? Did you, do we point to somewhere else to come up with this, or is this?
It was just to follow what local standard of code that we have.
And have we looked at how many properties this would actually exclude, based on the buffer amount?
It actually excludes very few properties. There is a small pocket of ML land west of Harbor, between Harbor and the 80 freeway over crossing there, which has commercial on one side, the Country West Shopping Center, and has the subdivision there to the west. And that would exclude a handful of properties, which is the majority of it. The majority of our ML-zoned land is directly adjacent to 80 off of Stillwater and farther down West Capital, where there is neither commercial or residential zone properties.
Okay. My final question has nothing to do with the commercial, and I know we're not supposed to talk about the livestock fencing, but it's just a point of clarity for me. On the 15.11.120 that you referenced earlier.
Correct.
The proposed D says, locations for portable livestock fencing shall only be approved in areas not adjacent to residential areas. My understanding of reading that is that currently, well, in this past season, we had several areas along the Branch Line Trail that this setup was on that would have been directly adjacent to residential areas. So are we saying that we would no longer be doing that?
Yeah. Commissioner Sternfels would like to direct you and the commission to Attachment III, which is the red line of the title of Chapter 15.
Right. That's where I'm at, I'd say.
Yeah, we have amended that particular section here. Let's see, only three areas not adjacent to residential.
So 15.11.120, new letter D and red line, location for portable livestock fencing shall only be approved in areas not adjacent to residential areas. So we're basically saying that any of the areas along the Branch Line Trail that back up to homes where we had the goats prior, that those are all adjacent, we would no longer be allowing those uses to take place. So I just want to make sure, if that's the policy direction city staff's proposing, you know, that's up for discussion, but I don't think that's what we're proposing. So either I'm misreading it, or it's miswritten, or.
I think that is what's being proposed, is no electric fencing.
Not tying it to the 500-foot buffer and just stating not adjacent allows a flexibility to allow it, being flexible with the adjacency. You know, not on top of, but not 500 feet. If there's a reasonable amount of protection between the fence and the properties, we would take that into consideration.
For land use purpose, that means, it could be interpreted as parcel, however, which could exclude the entire parcel.
Well, so I'm hoping that city staff have come to some clarification on the intention. I might have spoke too soon.
Brian, is there a distance between the residential, not parcel by parcel, but actually, say, from an actual house itself that you have to deal with?
As this year was the first year that the issue was proposed using these portable fences, we wanted to put something in the code that allowed us the flexibility. As the city develops and spreads out, the conditions are going to change. You know, the goats generally are only used in areas that are difficult to get to with hand crews, and understandably so, there are areas near residential zones that they would be used. But before anything's approved in upcoming years, which would be next year, and let me also state that I've got nothing against the goats that everybody loves. I am quite a fan myself. But again, it was just allow some flexibility, noting that the city development is going to change the way things are moving forward.
You're already trending on Twitter, I just want you to know.
Chair Austin, Chair Austin, if I may, and principal planner and legal counsel, I don't believe the intent was to change the way we have been operating with the goats. I think it was to provide a little bit more oversight with respect to when the goats and the agricultural electrical fencing is adjacent to residential. So I would, I believe the language is a little bit off in what's in front of you, and I would ask the city attorney and the principal planner to work on a slight change that would say when the fencing is, are to be located adjacent to a residential neighborhood, that it needs to be reviewed by the Fire Marshal and the building official for safety.
Yeah, so that's actually a very helpful clarification. I think we're not so concerned about the verbiage, but mostly the intent. And I think that we're in accordance that the intent is, I see nodding, the intent is somewhat consistent with what commissioners are in favor of. So with that understanding of an intent, can allow city staff to mull that over.
Thank you.
So while we have a couple of minutes, I just want to clarify.
Chair Austin, let me, there's a couple of ways we could go here. We could break for a minute and let us actually draft some language.
Yes.
Or if you're comfortable doing so based on the community development director's comment, we can work that into the draft that goes to the council.
So I'll start with, Vice Chair Sternfels, does that sound something you'd be amenable to, that we understand the intent, but we allow discretion, staff's discretion on the actual verbiage?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's just the way the sentence is constructed, it appears to be more limiting than the intent. So I'm, I believe with great confidence that our city staff can figure that out, and as long as we can maybe mention that in the motion, that'd be good. But I know we still have some other issues that the commission is still working through that I want to be respectful of.
We actually, so. We actually, so we actually only got through, we had started with Commissioner Vu, we haven't made our way down, but I've identified that we have at least two items that we have brought up. One is a concern about the five-hundred-foot radius, which we've clarified applies to more industrial-style fencing rather than temporary-style fencing, and we have raised concerns about clarification that the temporary fencing use for livestock would not be uniformly prohibited in residential areas generally. So I'll turn it back to Commissioner Vu for additional questions and comments, and we'll work our way across.
No additional comments yet.
Yeah, I think you've opened up and I'm teasing you. Commissioner Liebig?
Madam Chair, I actually have a process question. Are we coming back for deliberation after you closed the public hearing, or is this, is this our comment period as well?
I'll provide another opportunity, yeah. I'm leaving the public comment period open because so many questions are coming up that maybe the fire marshal and the applicant may be able to respond to some of these clarifying questions.
Okay, since we're addressing Fire Marshal and staff, I'll limit my comments to these. David, the comment about the five hundred feet being intended for industrial, it's actually, it's really not written that way. So if you could take a look at that, for example, it's, I don't want to throw out all the numbers, but it's within the same section as electrified fencing for the industrial and for animal control. And so if we could clean that up as well, that's probably what threw me off there. As far as, by the way, Fire Marshal Johnson actually answered all my questions basically before this, so I'm going to hold off on my other comments until we, until we keep going. But I'm fully supportive of where the commission is going. I think, in general, the residents really like the goats.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioner Laporte?
I love the goats, too. I have no further questions from what we clarified previously.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo?
No other questions.
And Vice Chair Sternfels? We managed to get through most of those questions. So commissioners, before I close the public hearing, any additional questions or comments, particularly for our applicant? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Start again with Commissioner Vu for comments. It sounds like we're going to have a little more discussion.
No comments or questions yet.
Okay, Commissioner Liebig?
Thank you so much. Thank you, staff, for pulling this together, and of course, trying to be efficient with the animal ones. To give a little history on some of this, this came up before us quite a while ago, and there was indeed the same amount of discussion. As one, we didn't want to lump the animals in with the industrial fencing, because they're two totally different uses, but then with the, where that cutoff is between the industrial and light industrial and business park. And this is where I start getting a little uncomfortable. We're talking about an eight-foot fence with another fence behind it that's charged in light industrial. And I know the uses may be similar, but I'm starting to get uncomfortable with the community interaction and the uses of these, of these types of, well, the uses on these types of parcels. I am more comfortable, just personally, if we were to treat ML as similar to the BP, which is by conditional use. That would get around your, well, maybe a lot of our other concerns. But primarily, it's not the charge, well, partly the charge, but it's also that eight-foot fence, the double barrier in light industrial, and what is this doing for our community in these areas? That's my, that's my concern on that. The other one is, on the flip side of that, for the goats, sorry, and the sheeps, and actually, we got llamas, too. I know the community loved them. There's this inherent safety risk when you have charged fencing, keeping animals in. I, too, was out on farms, like, when I was a little kid, all the time. I think we all have to touch the wire. Maybe not all of us, but, so there is a safety concern. The recommendation is a second fence on the outside of the electrified fence, and I'm, you know, along with signage and twenty-four-hour, somebody on site twenty-four hours a day supervising the site, hopefully we're minimizing the risks. So...
Can I just clarify something? Are you recommending that one potential solution would be to change this in the ML or light industrial area to a conditional use?
Yes, for ML. So we would, we would essentially be keeping the intent of this, but I am nervous about it being in the light industrial. That's just me personally. And then the other one is, I would like to keep the goats near residential. I think it's a great interaction. Maybe not for everyone, but it also allows us to use the goats along the levees, which is extremely difficult to mow, and tough areas to get into. So, okay, I think, I think that's it. I think we can accommodate safety of the fencing being near residence some way other than, you know, a big buffer. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Laporte?
No questions, just, I was just happy to see that it's solar-powered.
Commissioner Castillo?
I would agree with Commissioner Liebig in terms of, you know, if we're addressing, I think my concern is still the five hundred feet and how we arrived to that particular buffer. But if there's a way to use the process in terms of a conditional use permit as it relates to some of them, maybe some of the, for the limited use, or I'm not sure what, what is it, limited industrial, or some of them, I think that would address some of the concerns in terms of safety, because then we'd take them up one by one and not necessarily have that, or have the need for that buffer of the commission addresses, you know, each application that comes before us. I'd be comfortable with that, if it eliminates the five hundred feet buffer.
So what I hear you recommending is that you may be interested in a conditional use in one zone or all of the zones in lieu of the five hundred-foot restriction?
I think that would address some of the safety concerns, because, I mean, we, obviously, we, the applicants would have to demonstrate that their application and the fact that, and the location that they're putting it is, you know, safe for that particular area, and will address all the safety mechanisms that that particular fence has. And so I think that will address, you know, some of those concerns, rather than just a blanket five hundred feet, and then they go put it wherever they can, aside from the five hundred feet buffer.
All right, Vice Chair Sternfels?
So I think at this point, I'll only offer a comment, and that is that going the route of requiring conditional use permit, one, creates a bit of uncertainty for applicants who may want to install the additional security features on their site. It also comes with the cost, and it also means that we're, we think we're the appropriate potty to approve every electric fence that goes up in town, and maybe we are, maybe we're not, but I'm not sure I'm quite there on that. To me, I think city staff could make some of these determinations.
I was proposing the CUP for the ML zone only.
Right.
ML plus, well, because it's already, it's already included for BP.
Right, right.
So, sorry, business park. So if somebody wants to include or include electrified fencing in business park, for example, they need a CUP. If the interest is to expand the area to include ML, I would include that in the CUP range, not the automatic. I think that's, that's just where I'm leaning and why I brought it up that way.
Yeah, I understand. Can I get a clarification from city staff on the five hundred foot? Does that apply to all the zones, or just currently?
As it's proposed, it would apply to the industrial zones and the BP zone.
But under current practice, is there a five hundred-foot radius at all?
No, there is not.
So we're adding additional restrictions on zones that currently would allow this without a restriction with the five hundred-foot addition, right?
That is correct.
But at the same time, we're adding a new zone? Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of caught on what we're doing and why.
The proposal for you tonight, first and foremost, is to allow in one way, shape, or form, electric fences in the limited industrial zone, of which we do have a very limited number of parcels in that district. It was previously considered by the commission and council a few years ago for other zoning districts, and as Mr. Lee stated, there have been a few installations in the light, lighter, light and heavy industrial zones. We haven't seen one in the BP yet. So they have proposed to add it to the ML there as a site on West Capital, that they wish to install one. And so the proposal is to, should we allow them in the ML or not, and if so, do we need to include any type of buffer, given that as you move into the ML, which is a general plan designation of mixed commercial-industrial, I mean, you're starting to move more toward the commercial side of things and away from the warehousing, trucking kind of, you know, heavy industrial zones. So should there be a buffer or not, given that we didn't do that with the last time with the light and heavy industrial, because for the most part, those are already well away from residential areas. But as we start to move into the ML, you do start to creep a little closer to some residential areas in our community. Same thing with the BP, and that's why I think why BP was conditional when we first did this a few years ago. So tonight, you really have several, you know, a few options in front of you. You can say it's fine in the ML, no buffer. It's not fine at all in the ML. There's a couple of ways we can go, but our recommendation is to add it to the ML, but include the buffer.
And is there a specific reason that you would prefer the buffer as opposed to the use permit, given that we already require use permit for the BP zone?
We, you know, we see it, I think, similarly, in that the primary matter with electric fences is, to us, is more of a construction issue. There's, that's why we, after we did the zoning changes for electric fences, we actually had to add this entire section into our construction section of our municipal code to address these. That was something that we, you know, the guard dog folks have been involved in, you know, previously. It was sort of a new thing to us. We hadn't seen electric fences installed, and then up until the last, you know, four or five years. So, you know, we have proceeded, you know, somewhat cautiously along this line. I think the, one of the main reasons why they wanted to be conditional in BP is that a lot of BP properties are like pure office, you know, they're on some of our, you know, main streets. We wanted to be able to take a look at that, given that there could be at least some negative perception of what, what electric fences may convey, you know, to the public. You know, we haven't seen any of those proposed, and it's probably unlikely someone would do it at an office, you know, building, although it's possible. That was the origin of the use permit on the BP zone, you know, back from like three years ago.
And I totally get that. That's why I'm wondering why we feel that that same thought process isn't warranted here, that, I mean, I have a hard time drawing the distinction between what we've already decided on for BP and some of this, some of the concerns Commissioner Liebig brought up about uses.
I mean, I think related to the ML zone, it's, we didn't, we didn't go with the use permit route for ML zone, because probably because there's a very, very small number of properties that are zoned ML in town. As Kathy mentioned, they're primarily on West Capital on the south side, West Capital west of eighty, and then along Stillwater, adjacent to the freeway, and maybe one other two small, there's a very small number of properties own this. So, again, given that those areas do start, at least in some cases, do start to approach some residential, that's where we wanted to, you know, include the buffer. We didn't think of or require a buffer for heavy industrial properties previously, because they tend not to be close to residential already.
So what's, I mean, does staff have an opinion or concern on going a conditional use route for?
We certainly could do that. That's another option.
But that would, I mean, I think what, what we're talking about, at least from Commissioner Liebig's proposal, was to take away the five hundred-foot buffer completely and just add a conditional use requirement for the light industrial.
I was actually pretty silent on the five hundred-foot buffer. Mine was just the conditional use for the ML instead of the approved. I'm, I'm actually not comfortable with making it an automatic in the ML, so.
And I just want to mention, too, that I think it's important to underscore that if we do propose a conditional use in one or three zones, that wouldn't preclude folks from, you know, just going through what is already an allowed use. It's just that if they want an electrified fence, in that case, they would need to come for discretionary approval. So in my perception, that wouldn't hold up an application. It would actually be incumbent upon the applicant, if they choose to have an electrified fence, that they would need to come here. And so I'm actually very comfortable with a conditional use in one or more zones.
So a couple, couple comments, and I'll close. If what we've been doing has largely been working in the existing zones, adding an additional buffer on those zones doesn't make sense to me. We already have made a policy decision on the BP zone, and for similar land use reasons, I think it's appropriate for the ML zone. And that also, by requiring conditional use in the ML zone, the concerns around ML, some of the ML parcels that are close to residential are also resolved, because you have a, we'd have to make a decision on those, which wouldn't necessitate the need, well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a need for the five hundred-foot buffer anymore. So I guess if, for me, I would be comfortable with going a conditional use permit in the ML zone, but I think the five hundred-foot buffer probably needs to be taken out, because it seems like we're adding an additional burden to parcels where we already made a policy decision that wasn't necessary, and I don't think it's been justified in this process why we would need to do that now, and by requiring conditional use permit for the other, for the new zone, we've essentially resolved that concern. So I'll leave it there and stop talking.
Can I ask a question for staff to clarify? David, the, any incidences of kids getting shocked on the fence, were those on the agricultural fences, or did that include the industrial fencing?
As I understood it, we did hear some complaints about the fencing related to the goats, and kids grabbing them, almost my own.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
So we've talked, we've talked about a lot of things. We have talked about keeping or removing the recommendation for the five hundred-foot radius in industrial areas. We've talked about a conditional use in one or more of these three zones, and we have addressed, and I think that we've addressed to the satisfaction of the commission, that we would allow staff to provide some feedback on, so to provide verbiage at their discretion, acknowledging that we are not interested in a, in all, a ban adjacent to residential parcels. So that's a lot of information. I'm going to turn it over for discussion as well as entertaining a motion.
Madam Chair, can I ask one question? Is the public hearing still open?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's closed.
I'm sorry, that was a no to attorney, not a no to the audience. I was answering a question.
So if it would be the preference of the commission to recommend that electric fences be conditionally permitted in the ML zone and not have the buffer, you know, staff would not object to that.
Can you, sorry, can you repeat that?
Staff would not object to if the commission's recommendation were to be for electric fences in the limited industrial zone be conditional use, but then not, not require the buffer.
I mean, that's, that's consistent. I mean, to do a straw poll for myself, I would be, I would, that's a motion that I would entertain.
Sorry, there was an edit. David, under prohibited fencing materials, sorry, this is seventeen thirty-one ten, I'm under B, where we specify the, for animal control is within A1, RRA, and RE. I propose striking the individual zones, only because we're I propose striking the, the individual zones, only because we're using, we're using fencing for animal control throughout the city.
When we wrote, when we wrote this at the time, this was a little bit late addition, because this was more for sort of, you know, rural areas, livestock, where, you know, people really had them sort of, you know, year-round, so to speak, or indefinitely, not the sort of more temporary use, like such as the goats.
I actually, I, you know, I didn't do my due diligence and check the actual language of the ordinance to make sure. It's not in the ordinance.
If I could make one suggestion. If I could make a suggestion, I, I think what I'm hearing is a desire to revise 1731-010B to strike ML from the first sentence, and in the second sentence to insert ML or before BP, so it would read a conditional use permit is required for use in the ML or BP zone, and to strike the third sentence in 1731-010. My suggestion would be if, if that is the concurrence, that we get concurrence on that particular piece before we turn to questions of temporary fencing.
Gotcha. That was, that was my intent on, on that one.
And then if I might, on the temporary fencing, it seems, what I'm hearing is there's a little bit of disparity maybe between 1731-010C, which would allow temporary portable electric fencing as a permitted use, essentially anywhere within the city, subject only to the requirements that are in 1511, which would be requirements specifically to temporary electric fencing. The disparity perhaps is in 1511-120D, the first sentence of which says, locations for portable livestock fencing shall only be approved in areas not adjacent to residential areas. So there is an inconsistency, I think, in those two sections. If you are comfortable with the way the zoning language is worded, then I would suggest we turn attention to 1511-120, and the community development director has suggested an approach, which I don't remember, because I didn't read it fast enough, but I believe it was in essence, if it's proposed adjacent to residences or residential area, it would be subject to review and approval by the fire department.
Yes.
So you could replace then that first sentence in 15, or recommend that the council replace that first second, first sentence in 1511-120 with something like portable livestock fencing adjacent to, and I'm not sure whether it's residences or residential areas, but shall be subject to review and approval by the fire department. I'll leave it at that.
So commissioners, is there any concern about the proposal?
This replaces, I'm sorry, I actually, I was looking at the, what I thought was the right spot.
So 1511, I think it's, is it B?
You said 1511-120?
Yes. Subdivision D.
D.
D as in dog.
So then this would be amended.
Thank you, I misheard, okay.
So staff's modified recommendation is acceptable to me, but I would be looking for a motion, and if you choose to make a motion, you can reference the amendments made by the city attorney. Would that be sufficient for the record?
Yes, but I would want one piece of clarification. Would it be portable livestock fencing adjacent to residences or residential areas?
Residences seems to be consistent with what we were, we had some concerns about residential partial, parcels or residential areas, and there's a lot of gray area in that.
Well, if you actually just include, I'm sorry, but a residence, you end up with a, a farmhouse versus a neighborhood. So I'm, I'm not trying to protect a couple of kids from a, that sounds terrible. As Fire Marshal Johnson, you know, in the farmhouse. I, I think what we're after here is a community where kids are, you know, playing and out and about versus one farmhouse. So I'm, I'm comfortable with residential areas.
And I'm fine with that, too.
Madam Chair, can you clarify the 500 feet just one more time? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we get this clear. I know we're running this discussion a little bit longer than we need to, but I just want to make sure that we clarify that.
So I will try and summarize what I believe the city attorney said, which was 17 dot 31 dot 010. Section A would remain the same. Section B would remove the third sentence, which is the one that references 500 feet. So that would be removed.
Correct.
It would also remove ML from the first sentence and include it with the second sentence. So it would read electrified fencing is prohibited unless used in the M1, M2, and M3 zones, et cetera. Then the next sentence reads, a conditional use permit is required for use in the BP and ML zones. And then in the section, section C, that would remain the same, which this references section 1511, and 1511 was modified per the way that the city attorney read it, and I might have to have him read it again.
I will read it again. So what I would suggest is the first sentence in section 15 point 11 point 120D, we would revise that first sentence to read portable livestock fencing adjacent to residential areas shall be subject to review and approval by the fire department.
I would suspect Commissioner Lebig that there may be an interest in having you make a motion.
Oh, all right. I will, I'm going to pause for a second. Charlene, are we okay to move forward? I'm just checking.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move staff recommended action with changes to 1731-010 as read by the city attorney, specifically in section B, as well as then section 1511-120B as read by the city attorney.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lebig.
Second.
The second from Vice Chair Sturm Falls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Oh, by the way, I had marked up my.
So you do, do you need to read that disclosure for this item?
No, because this was a recommendation only, so it will be proceeding to council regardless.
Great, thank you for clarifying. Item A, item eight, public hearing regarding proposed municipal code amendments related to cannabis manufacturing, wholesale logistics, distribution, transportation, and indoor commercial cultivation facilities in the heavy industrial zone, development agreements, and conditional use permits. I want to mention that I have no request to speak. If you are interested in speaking on this item, please complete a comment card. Otherwise, we will hear staff, staff recommendation.
Wait, I will wait for Commissioner Castillo to return if you would prefer. Or I could proceed.
Why don't you go ahead and proceed?
Okay, thank you.
It may be a minute.
What I present to you, I have a short PowerPoint to help walk through this particular item tonight, because as you may recognize from the staff report, we have numerous recommended actions tonight, and they are, they are related but also separate at the same time in that we've listed them all separately, because they are separate actions, even though you ultimately could act on them as a group, they are independent and do, so we do want to address them, the different facets of this particular project. Before you tonight are municipal code amendments primarily related to cannabis uses in our heavy industrial zone. The applicant here has a facility at 3705 Seaport Boulevard in our heavy industrial zone, and they propose to have a three-part cannabis business in this particular existing industrial building. It would include cannabis manufacturing, distribution, and also indoor commercial cultivation of cannabis. And additionally with that, there are proposed development agreements and conditional use permits, and I'll, I'll try to, I'll dress, try to address each one of those for you separately. So the municipal code amendments, as the way we, as we know at the planning commission, we've, you know, considered various municipal code amendments related to cannabis uses, and we have been looking at those on a case-by-case basis in keeping with council direction. And so tonight, we're forward with another slate of those for your consideration. First of all, this would be to actually create a definition of an indoor, a cannabis indoor cult, commercial cultivation facility, and then establish various requirements for that, which are consistent with the other cannabis uses that we have seen before the planning commission and city council, most notably is the requirement for a development agreement and also for a security plan. And then sec, you know, as related to this, cannabis manufacturing and cannabis distribution, which are separate things, already in our municipal code and already defined, however, they are, they're not in the, currently in the heavy industrial district. So the second part of the municipal code amendment would be to actually add those two land uses, which the commission has previously considered as a, as a, as a land use, as a conditional use into the heavy industrial zone. The actions you would take in previously have added those into the light industrial or, or limited industrial zones, but we have not considered a project, a cannabis project in the heavy industrial zone until, until this one. So the requested action before you tonight would be approval of a resolution 17 dash 11 PC. This would make a recommendation to the city council that they approve the implementing ordinances that would make these municipal code changes. Second part of this we have before you is actually three separate development agreements with this particular applicant. The development agreements are very similar in nature, but they are, they're specific to the three proposed uses of this building. Staff is proposing individual development agreements, given that each facet of their business will require a separate license from the state once the state begins to issue those licenses. So we, this is where, this is where it's important is that, you know, each use, even though all three uses are proposed to be under the same roof, they, they do need to be separate and distinct under state law, and each one require a separate license. So we are looking at them, you know, collectively in that they are going under the same building, but they, they are separate uses, you know, by license, by licensure. And then the, similar to the other development agreements that have been before the planning commission, they include certain key payments to the city as part of their operations, the safety and security plan, and then also the assignment provisions that would be necessary for any development agreement when there's a successor in interest. So the requested actions for this component of the project will be approval of three separate but very similar resolutions. Each would recommend approval of the respective development agreements to the city council. And as I stated, these development agreements are very similar to what you have seen previously on related, on other cannabis projects. And then lastly, before you tonight, is three separate conditional use permits, similar to the development agreements. These track with each particular component of this, of this use inside this building. We want to, we want to mirror these together and have a, you know, separate development agreement and separate use permit for each component of the project, given that each one would ultimately require a separate state license. So the three uses again are the indoor commercial cultivation, manufacturing, and then also distribution. So the requested action tonight would be approval of those use permits, subject to the recommended findings and conditions. And as similar to the previous cannabis projects that we have considered, your approval of those conditional use permits is predicated upon ultimate council action on the related municipal code changes and the, and the proposed development agreements. Should council ultimately not approve those ordinances or, or development agreements for whatever reasons, these use permits would, would not be valid. So that's a summary of the actions before you. We did present this in a workshop format back in June. The project does remain, you know, substantially similar as was presented to there, and the principals with the project are here tonight and available to answer questions. And also at this time, I'll close my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Great, thank you. In the interest of time, I wanted to see if the applicant had prepared a presentation. You're not required to, because we have had a workshop.
Yeah, we're not anticipating a formal presentation, but they are available.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So with that, I will actually go ahead and open the public hearing. And I'll start with Commissioner Laporte with questions for staff, the applicant, or general comments.
No questions right now.
Good, thank you.
No questions.
Just one for Mr. Tilly and Ms. Hamilton, in regards to adding indoor cultivation to our list, you know, I, I'm just wondering from a city staff level, if you could talk a little bit about, you know, how that fits in with our long-term strategy for what we want to engage on and what we don't want to engage on, and as far as cannabis-related business lines. I know in the past, we've had lots of conversations about focusing on distribution and logistics and those items, and this project came forward and had this third component to it. I know city staff is recommending we approve the item, but I'm just wondering kind of what the, if you could speak a little bit to the city staff engagement with other departments on, on this piece in particular.
Sure. It's harder for David and I to communicate across the room. Indoor cultivation has been one that has been reviewed by all departments. We have looked at it from a water use standpoint, as well as electricity and, and safety and security. Police and fire have, have vetted it, just like they have the others. The city council has provided direction a few times that they have a comfort level with indoor cultivation. It's the outdoor open-air cultivation that we have had issues with in the past from public nuisances, as well as being a criminal attractant. So to date, we don't foresee any, or we, we haven't had any issues with the indoor cultivation, and this is proposing one up to 22,000 square feet, I believe. So it's in the, the medium range of the state licensing.
And then can you just speak from an economic development engagement standpoint, as far as how we, how this fits in with our economic development strategies as being a food hub or, or does not, or other economic development strategies we have in place?
I suppose, yeah, we do have, I suppose, we haven't really talked so much about it in, with respect to the food hub, but I would say that it is another component of our rich agricultural history.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lebig? Just bear in mind, we're still in the public hearing session, and there'll be opportunity for discussion.
No questions or comments at this time.
No questions or comments, yep.
Okay, I actually do have one request to speak. Sunny Sun, if you want to address the commission?
Hi, actually, I just have a question. I have a situation here. I have two listings, oh, it's too high.
It's quite high.
Oh, sure, thank you. So I have a two, I'm real estate broker, commercial real estate broker. I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a two listings on, in the West Sacramento on Rice Avenue, and I really helping, my client want to sell this property, however, we receiving phone calls and asking about this possibility for cultivation. And then I came to planning, planning, planning department a couple of months ago, and the answer was no. And then, so lately, I keep receiving phone calls, and I came to the department again, and then they directed me come to this meeting, and then. and then they directed me come to this meeting, and then I still don't feel like I have answer. So I, because in South Sacramento, there's, they have very specific area we call green zone. So, but in West Sacramento, I don't know if that is possible for people to, to do that indoor, the indoor growing. I don't know if we have a specific area or the zoning requests, and when we're going to have that concrete answer, so I can let my client know, hey, your property does not worth this much. Because in, in the owner's mind, they, they feel like they're property own, like, because the, actually, so in South Sacramento, the property value like a tripled in that green zone. So, so that's why my client holding on those two property, and they don't want to sell, they feel like their property worth that much. So, so I just have question, I want to, anyone can answer me.
Well, you are on the cutting edge. I'll allow, I'll allow staff to respond, but that is actually what we are deciding here tonight and city council, so it is a process. It's not, it's not that there is a decision that has been made, or that I can definitively tell you when a decision will be made. So I'll turn it over, maybe Mr. Tilly could give a little better clarification on that.
Yeah, just presently, the only proposal on the board, on the docket right now for indoor cultivation would be in the heavy industrial zone. And the Rice Avenue presently is a light industrial zone, so should one want to do indoor cultivation there, they would have to pursue a similar process to what we are doing right here.
I see. It's going through hearing, and so.
It will be, it will be a similar, similar type of project to what's before us tonight, but it will be applicable to the light industrial zone. We're only talking about heavy industrial tonight.
Oh, I see. Okay, so.
For, as it pertains to cultivation, other uses are, have been addressed in one way.
Indoor cultivation.
Yes, excuse me, indoor cultivation, that's correct.
Okay. So it seems like this process is, is quite long.
Yes, and so I would recommend, because this is a public hearing, you can follow up with city staff, but the answer is that, yeah, there's, yeah.
So it's, it's known now, for the, because of the zoning, right?
It's currently not permitted.
Yeah.
There is, there is one use pending in the ML zone, and that's for manufacturing. And that's, that has made it through the planning commission, but that is currently with council. We need to be.
We'd be happy to discuss this further offline with this lady.
And I think if maybe you grab a card from Charlene, she'll probably be able to talk, talk with you about the process.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So are there any other public comments? I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will start with Commissioner Laporte, Commissioner Laporte again.
Chair Austin, I'm sorry, before we begin, there was one part of my initial presentation that I neglected to mention, and I wanted to apologize for that. It's related to my opening remarks during staff communications at the beginning of the meeting. At last night's council meeting, when the planning, I mean, the council took up the high-end medical, which was the cannabis manufacturing in the ML, and then also the testing labs and related part, staff had carried forth your recommendations related to the age restrictions, and those additional findings that we worked out at the planning commission at, back in July. Council ultimately did vote to not include those in the final, in their final action, at least on first reading. So given that that was just last night, you know, that was obviously, we prepared this staff report prior to that, so we would suggest even that this particular ordinance, that the section E and F, which was the age restriction and the related extra findings, that you recommend we not include those going forward to council, should you move this forward. And I believe that would be, that would be, make it consistent with the council's actions last night. So under, on the attachment three, the draft ordinance, about the middle of the page, seventeen forty-two-ten, moving, moving down to subsection one E and one F, at, should your commission elect to move this item forward tonight, we'd request that you strike subsection E and F.
Duly noted, thank you. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Laporte for discussion and comments and questions.
Sure. Just never easy to be first, so I appreciate all of your work, and definitely have put a lot into, into this being the first, and it shows from when you presented the first time to where it's at now, so just want to say thank you, and wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo.
Thanks for being here again. I think the presentation last, at the workshop was pretty thorough, the briefings we got in our package is pretty thorough. I don't have any questions, I'm going to be supporting the project.
Thank you. Vice Chair Sturmphels?
So I'm having still a hard time getting there on indoor cultivation. And I've struggled with it quite a bit, because I think the project that's coming forward is, is the right one to consider if we're going to consider indoor cultivation, but I've spent quite a bit of time looking at research, particularly around property values in areas that have adopted some of these policies, and my concern is that by allowing this use, we're going to drive up the cost of obtaining property in certain areas of town that would otherwise be used for other purposes that support our economic development strategies for the city. And we've spent a lot of time focusing on safety and security, but the one theme I've, I've kind of missed from the conversation is if we're creating a new, if we're allowing new types of businesses to enter our community, how does that fit with our economic development strategy? And, which is part of the reason I posed the question earlier, because I'm not sure we know yet, and I'm not sure we understand it, but it's going to be one of the biggest economic drivers should we approve this type of use in our town. The comments I'm here, heard, I'm hearing and have had heard from city staff in the past is that the phone is ringing off the hook for people wanting to get into this market, and waiting for us to allow these uses to take place. And we've allowed several that fit with our traditional economic development strategies, but this one is kind of outside of that box for me. And I, I have concerns about what it will ultimately do to other businesses wanting to enter the market in West Sacramento if the prices of real estate are being driven up for folks wanting to cultivate indoors. And I know that in this case, the applicant already has the building and the property in hand, so maybe that's a different situation than the rest, but allowing it, I think is only going to create more of that. And so it, it's given me some pause, candidly, which is difficult, because again, the applicant's been very forthcoming and honest, and done all the right things, and they've, they've presented a good project. And honestly, I like what they're doing, the co-locating of multiple licensing stuff, the desire to be kind of a regional facility, like I totally appreciate all of that. I'm just struggling with whether or not indoor cultivation is desirable, in my view, for our community. So I'm not sure I, I've landed on where I'm voting yet at this point, but I'm going to put that out there at this point, just to share with the commissioners and with the public and the applicant, that that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Leibig.
Just opposed to that, hearing from members of the chamber who noted empty floor space out there. So that's one of my concerns as well, is, is we have a use for a space that's currently empty, and actually, there's a few spaces out there that are currently empty. Not that I'm not hearing you, and, and we probably want to watch the process carefully, which I think we're doing with, again, conditioning the permit. Not that I want to overly condition, do, do too many conditional use permits on all of these policies, because every time we do this, this makes additional work for staff, as well as us. It means every time we throw out a conditional use permit, it comes in front of us, which, you know, I certainly don't mind, but it means Andrea is going to have to bring in more pizza. So we're long meetings. Anyway, off topic, just to balance between available space and, and need, so it's an interesting discussion, I just don't have an answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu.
No comments.
Yeah, it's, it's an important discussion, so I think of a couple of things. I, I actually very much share Commissioner Leibig's perspective. So I happen to work under the College of Agricultural and Environmental Sciences at UC Davis, and it's surprising that even individuals who one would suspect would have a more kind of politically conservative bent are very interested in the economic development implications of the kind of agrotech aspect of, of the type of thing that's being proposed here. I think to Vice Chair Sturmphels' point, I think we need to be really cognizant of what kind of precedent we're setting, because we are going to get more applications like this coming forward. So how do we decide what is a correct project applicant volume? That remains to be seen, but in each of these applications that have come forward, I think we need to really think again, to reiterate, the precedent that we're setting. For me, I consider a couple of things in this particular application. One thing that's particularly attractive to me is that these are local applicants, this is not an out-of-state applicant, and that is very important to me, that this is locally-based applicants and individuals who I believe would be committed to local hiring. And, and sourcing, and, you know, a, a local supply chain. I also think that there is something to be said for the type of project that's being proposed, in that, again, there is a desire to co-locate, there's a commitment to sustainable, to sustainability principles, and so this is the type of applicant and the type of project I would like to see. That being said, I'm not going to approve everything that comes forward just because. And so I think that we'll, we'll need to think, maybe in the next couple of months, what some of our standards may be, and I would actually like to recommend, perhaps when they're not so impacted, for us to have perhaps a workshop with commissioners about, or, or even council prioritizing kind of the types of projects or policies that are moving forward, so we can be a little bit more strategic to, you know, to Commissioner Sturmphels' point, you know, will we crowd out the market in favor of cannabis and drive out other potential desirable uses? And I think that's really an important consideration. But with that, this is a, a application that I'm willing to support for the reasons that I've listed. So I open up for additional discussion or motion.
Can I get just one clarifying thing? Sorry, there was a question I had on the last, on the last meeting. Oh, thank you for all of your comments. I'm going to dig into the weeds just a little bit.
That's fine.
Did we address air quality concerns for indoor cultivation?
Yes, and we have established in the, sort of hardwired into the municipal code, the ventilation filtration system, that would apply to the indoor cultivation facilities, as well as the other cannabis-related uses. And so that's one of the new requirements under seventeen forty-two-ten M.
All right, thank, thank you so much. I definitely support your comments, by the way, and actually, I think staff has been doing a good job of navigating this new field and bringing forth quality projects, because I know there, there have been several knocking at the door, so. With that, I will, I will move staff's recommended action with the changes to section seventeen point forty-two point zero-one-zero, subsection one, for the removal of sections E and F.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Leibig, and a second from Commissioner Castillo, all those.
I'm sorry. Can we clarify, are we taking all items at once, or are we?
I was recommending all items at once. I apologize, I knew you had actually, now that, I know you had issues. That would be, Madam Chairs.
So we have, we have a motion on the table, I don't know if someone wants to, I believe the appropriate order that has been motioned and seconded, and that we have to go with that one, and then if that does not pass, then we entertain an alternative motion, is that correct?
That is an option, the other option would be an amendment to the motion.
Okay, so an amendment to the motion, so those are our two options, we can vote now, or we can have an amendment.
For example, you could amend the motion to vote on all the items except items four and, or four and seven, and then vote separately on four and seven.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Or as another alternative, you could vote on each of items two through nine separately.
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to avoid that.
Sorry, so there, all right, so there's a, there's a motion that's been seconded, so what are we doing now?
So I said, there's motions, seconded, our two options are to take the vote, or to entertain an amendment.
Got it. So we're waiting for amendments?
We're, we're waiting to see if there is an amendment.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, I have a motion and a second, and I think.
Roll call vote, please.
And I think we will do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Laporte?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturmphels?
Aye.
Commissioner Leibig?
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Vu?
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries.
Related to the conditional use permits that you just approved in this action, any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission in this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within fifteen days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. That would be specific to the conditional use permits, the municipal code amendments and development agreements will be going off to council already.
Thank you very much. We will move to informal discussion. I'll actually start with one, I think I've said this before, but I, this is, we're, we're getting closer. The California League of, the League of California Cities Conference will be held at the Sacramento Convention Center the weekend of September fifteenth, and then the American Planning Association California chapter is also having their conference at the Sacramento Convention Center the weekend of September twenty-third. So I would highly encourage planning commissioners to attend either or both of those conferences as available, and you can talk with city staff about resources that may be available to support that. Does anybody have additional informal discussion?
I'm actually on the board at the California Museum, and we're finally launching the Unity Center, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so next Saturday, the twenty-sixth. So come out if you can.
And then what I'll ask is maybe if you or, Mr. Tilly could forward out those info, that information to commissioners, that would be great. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.